Good afternoon, everyone. The February 25th meeting of the Henrico County School Board will now come to order. We have a busy afternoon, so we will get things going with the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The agenda is approved. We're going to welcome Dr. Tigan up to the podium. The first big thing on our agenda is a public hearing to solicit input on the proposed 2021-22 annual financial plan, and we're going to ask Dr. Tigan to share some information before we have our public hearing.
Yes, just wait one second. We're getting the presentation up. Can I launch it from here? Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Cashwell, I'm happy to be here today and to any of our speakers here that I would like to do an abbreviated version of the presentation to share before the citizens come forward for their comments. This is the entire budget before you for which the public will be providing comments today. The total proposed budget for FY '22 is $665.2 million, a $22.9 million increase or a 3.6% increase over last year's adopted budget of $642.3 million. This includes the general fund, debt services for major construction projects, school nutrition, which is a self-sustaining service, and then our state and federal grants. As you can see, the general fund provides the majority of the funding to operate our schools and is what we use for our day-to-day operations of our schools. The general fund for the FY '22 recommended budget is $526.1 million. This is a $16.2 million increase over last year's adopted budget, and this is, again, a 3.2% increase over our FY '21 adopted budget and is before you for consideration, and people will be commenting hopefully today.
And Dr. Tigan, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think based on the way the slides are showing, and it may be showing for the public on our screens, it needs to be shifted so that the entire slide will show. At least on the prior slide, the whole chart wasn't visible.
Okay. That's because we're not truly in presentation.
There, if you just would pause there for a moment so that those who are following along might have an opportunity to see the full chart, although you verbally shared those numbers. Thank you for pausing there for a moment so folks who wanted to see the visual could catch up. Please proceed.
And this pie chart provides a summary of those general fund expenditures. It's sometimes really nice to have a graphic view. Here's a summary of the general fund revenue that the public will be commenting on. This is, you'll notice there is a hold for the target, which will be updated later in the spring when the county adopts their budget. And the proposed budget will be back before the board this afternoon for approval. It will then go to the county, and the county will hold a public hearing on April 13th at the county's Western Government Center. So people who have not had a chance to speak today will have another opportunity to do so at that time. And the Board of Supervisors will act on the proposed budget on April 27th. It was the proposed. We've heard that might be updated to two weeks prior to that on the 12th. If that comes back, and then it would come back to us after that, it's currently slated for the May 13th for final approval. The approved budget will go into effect on July 1 of 2021. And so that's just a little introduction. I would like to thank Debbie Hargrave, who's sitting in the back, who's here today to also answer any questions you may have and has been so instrumental in bringing this budget forward. So thank you, Debbie. And we'll turn it over and let public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Tigan. Board members, before we proceed, any questions or comments? Okay. We will go forward with our hearing on the budget. Some citizens may have signed up in advance with our school board clerk, and I understand we do not have anyone signed up in advance. Is that correct? Okay. We will follow, so we will not follow that list, but we will allow anyone else who wishes to speak to do so this afternoon. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and neighborhood or school affiliation. Once you've started speaking, finished speaking, we ask that you write your name and contact information on the sign-in form located on the table behind the microphone. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system that is on the platform of the stage. Speakers will have a three-minute time limit. The light will turn green as the remarks begin. Yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that you stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here to hear from you, our community. Speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not be responding to speakers, but we will carefully consider your comments regarding the annual financial plan. We appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and providing your input. And do we have anyone who would wish to address the board? Everybody must be happy with the budget. We can only assume. But we appreciate any comments that have been submitted to us in writing. We have not gotten any through the public input forum, but we have received emails that the public has sent in regard to the budget. So we will move on. It's necessary for the board to move into a closed meeting for discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of the section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees, and admission and discipline of specific students. Is there a motion to move into closed session for these purposes?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now in closed session. Okay, board members, it is time to certify our closed session. Is there a motion to certify that only those items detailed in the agenda for the closed session were discussed?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Atkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Closed session has been certified. We're going to deviate from our agenda very briefly and ask our superintendent to make a special recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board for the opportunity to share a few moments recognizing some really important and amazing folks. And first, I want to start by recognizing our school nurses and Mrs. Robyn Gilbert, who has become a regular fixture at our meetings, but for today's purposes isn't going to be presenting to us. We want to present to her our appreciation on behalf of the administration and this school board. Mrs. Gilbert, please come forward. We have T-shirts for both you and each and every nurse that say, to show our appreciation. She's wearing one. It's crushing COVID day by day. So if you could hold up. And Mrs. Gilbert, if you would pause for just a moment and hold up one of those shirts. Our vice chair, Mrs. Shea, has come down to present these to our nurses, again, on behalf of this entire board and our administration. Our nurses are simply amazing, absolutely. Our crushing COVID day by day says hashtag Nurse Life, hashtag HCPS Nurse Life on the shirts. And for those of you who have been through the Raceway vaccine events, our employees have been so complimentary of the amazing service that was provided and continues to be provided to our community in this very heroic effort. Thank you to you and to the entire team of nurses on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robyn.
I would be remiss if I didn't, during this moment of recognition, also take the opportunity to recognize our board clerks publicly. Last week was School Board Appreciation, Clerk Appreciation Week, and there is no doubt that Mrs. Harris and Mrs. Burton go above and beyond to support this board and the administration in putting together this important public service, which is to provide these meetings for our constituency. So if you will all join me in thanking our tremendous board clerks for all that they do. And last but not least, if you knew it was School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, you know it is School Board Appreciation Month, and I know that we are all grateful for our school board and all that they do during a quote-unquote "normal" year in regards to policy and budgets and buildings and charting the course for the school division. But in this most unusual and most challenging year, this school board has served our community in a tremendous way tirelessly throughout this pandemic, assisting us in charting our course forward through what have been some tremendously difficult and choppy waters. I cannot adequately express my thanks to this board for that support, and I know this group shares that thanks. So we, from the bottom of our hearts, want you all to know as a school board how much the staff appreciate you, the entire HCPS team and community. So on behalf of all of us, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And I'm just going to add, I'll take one moment. I think our three newest board members get that appreciation as much as anybody else because to learn under these circumstances and to come in, and I think five board meetings in, they have to make decisions that none of us would have ever expected. So they have risen to a level of learning, just seriously on the go, and it is amazing the work that they've done. So I will commend our three newest especially for being able to learn and talk about grace under fire. It is amazing what they've been able to do. So thank you very much. We appreciate that. So we're going to move on.
Yes, thank you.
And the hugs, virtual hugs all around. So we'll turn it over, Madam Superintendent.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item is in relation to my recommendation that the school board readmit or approve the readmission of student case numbers 18-19-S-22 and student case 19-20-S-3. And the names of those students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion to approve the admission of student cases number 18-19-S-22 and 19-20-S-3?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The student readmission requests are approved.
Thank you. Next, the item is in relation, as you heard during our public hearing on the budget, my seeking your approval of the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 annual financial plan, as has been previously presented to this board and publicly. And so again, we'll just recap one or two highlights of that plan, offer any opportunity should the board have any questions, again, before seeking your formal approval. Dr. Tigan?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. The superintendent's recommended budget was shared with you at the January 28th School Board meeting for the first time. Since then, the superintendent has presented the proposed budget to the county manager. At the Board of Supervisors meeting on February 9th, I'm sorry, since that meeting with the county manager, we actually had information related to salaries for staff, and this afternoon, you know, there was a public comment session. And basically, you know, as we go through this budget process, it has been, you know, a back and forth between what's proposed and input from our constituents and our staff until it leads to the final budget. As we look at the budget recap, we compare to last year, but really, let's get to where we are for this year. For the proposed FY '21-22 recommended budget is for $665.2 million. That's a 3.6% change. We do anticipate that this will change as some of those salary fundings comes over from the county. And, you know, through this, we've seen some additions to our budget, and we look at, we always compare our current year to the previous year as far as where our funds are coming from. There's a lot of consistency in that. We know our operating budget comes through. The general fund is the major contribution to our funding source, as well as debt service, our school nutrition services, and our state and federal grants. In the expenditures, you see the same pattern that emerged from year to year, where the greatest extent of our fund expenditures come through instruction, and a lot of that is our staff, our teachers, and the staff that support our students. And then as we look at the general fund summary of the revenue, you know, the state provides a portion of our fund, you know, a significant portion of the funding, as does the county, with just a small amount coming from federal dollars. The county also provides us with meals tax money, as well as you see here on the right-hand side, the target, and that was the proposed increase. We do anticipate, again, that going up. As we know, the Board of Supervisors and the county manager have indicated that they will be supplying additional funds to us, not only for the salary increase, but several other initiatives. And so, you know, this is basically an overview. You can, the steps we've been through, you can see that we're here at February 25th, where we'll be asking for your approval of this proposed budget. We just heard from our counterparts on the county side that the public hearing on the county side will now be held March 23rd at the county's Government Western Center, and that the Board of Supervisors will actually act on their budget April 13th. They're a couple weeks ahead on their budgeting, based on all the work they did around the compensation piece. And so we are currently slated to bring the budget back to you all for final approval. Once we get their approved budget, it would be then to you on May 13th. And, you know, whether that changes based on their schedule, we'll have to see, and then it will go into effect on July 1. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Tigan. And I just want to reiterate for those watching, and again, for this board, that the budget you see here, as it's been recommended, reflects the initial financial target we were given from county government and the manager at the time and does balance our budget accordingly. It does not include the proposed compensation increase that's still to be approved on the side with the Board of Supervisors. So this is that first step, as Dr. Tigan said, and adjustments will be made, again, for us to bring that final version to you.
Yes, ma'am.
According to the timeline.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tigan. Ms. Consella, do you have any questions or discussion before we move forward?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to, for a point of clarity, either from Dr. Cashwell or Dr. Tigan, on Slide 12, as Dr. Cashwell just said, additional compensation is not yet included. And I would imagine that the other items mentioned on this slide, where we talk about enrollment trends, social emotional supports, summer academy, the fall school year, and funding for operations of our three buildings under construction, these things are not yet in this budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But we do anticipate funding coming over from the county in addition to the compensation. We know we have funds coming for our three new buildings.
For the operations, such as, I know specifically for holiday, I need an AP as well as library resources?
Yes, absolutely, Mrs. Consella. So as you see, you know, at the time this budget was brought forth, it balanced us to that target. We identified this list as those unmet needs, and so we continue to work with county budget staff, of course, have a rough number now for employee compensation also in relation to our remediation efforts, summer academy, and some of the efforts into next school year. We plan to leverage the additional CARES funding, and then for those pieces related to the opening of the new schools and not counting construction furniture fixture, that's been accounted for in those construction budgets. This is for additional staff that would go with the expansion of the building and/or resources. We've collaborated with county budget staff, so they're aware of that need, and we anticipate those being funded as well.
Thank you so much. It's important that we try to provide clarity for those watching that may not really understand how these things, how the numbers will change potentially before it comes back to us, once we take into account additional funding from the government side, as well as CARES Act funding. So thank you. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. Ms. Shea, do you have any questions? Reverend Cooper? Ms. Atkins? Thank you. I will just add one thing. I've been asked the question a number of times. We had discussed previously adding additional slots at Maggie Walker. That is not included in this budget at this time. That is something we are hoping to maybe add next year. There are so many asks, and there are so many things that we have to make difficult decisions about prioritizing, and we still have things yet to be added to the budget. But it is that long process that everybody can see. So it will come back to us. But at this point, we're going to consider this, I guess you could call it the draft, but it is our annual financial plan at this moment in time. So is there a motion to approve the 2021 annual financial plan?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an approved budget. That's awesome.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next item is in relation to our Health Committee. As has been in a fixture at each of our board meetings, we will receive an update on health and safety conditions from our Henrico County Public Schools Health Committee. And so Dr. Tigan, switching hats now, out of finance and into health. Thank you. I'll turn it over to her.
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. It's always nice to be able to come and bring some updates, especially when the data is improving and community spread is decreasing. The HCPS Health Committee met on Wednesday of last week and on Monday of this week. Our meeting's got a little messed up due to the snow and ice. And the guidance, the meetings were really focused on the new guidance that has been provided to schools from the CDC, and updating the committee members on the progress of the first and second vaccines for our employees, and the refresh of the Health Updates webpage in preparation for greater numbers of students returning to in-person learning. The new guidance from the CDC contains some of the elements we are quite familiar with while reassessing the community metrics schools should focus on. The three essential elements are the layered mitigations. There is no changing, no changes here. It's still focused on everyone wearing a mask, maintaining six feet of social distancing to the greatest extent possible, washing hands often and coughing and sneezing into our elbows, frequent cleaning and disinfection of high-touch areas, and a focus on contact tracing. The risk of community transmission, you might recall that in October, the guidance shifted from five levels to four levels of returning to school and went to a 14-day summation of data. Now it's changing to a seven-day timeframe and four levels. And so I'll show you what that looks like in just a minute. And then, so the phased learning modes, really focusing on offering virtual options for students and staff, dependent, and it's very dependent on the community transmission levels, and talks about differences between elementary, middle, and high, as well as athletics and extracurricular activities versus academic activities. And as you can see from this graphic from Tuesday, two days ago, the burden levels for Henrico have been trending down for both the daily case incident rate per 100,000 persons and the seven-day moving average percentage, percent positivity. And that trend, that trending down has been over a month. So each day for over a month, we've seen downward trends. And using the new guidelines, we can see where we are with regards to the risk of community transmission. And so here is a visual of what the thresholds for community transition are and what that will mean for schools. The total new cases per 100,000 persons in the past for Henrico on Tuesday would indicate moderate transmission, while the percent of nucleic acid amplification test, another new term they're throwing into us, but the PCR is just one version of this, was at substantial transmission. I will tell you, between Tuesday and Wednesday, we saw a decrease where the total number of new cases per 100,000 went from 24.6 down to 21.7, still keeping it in that moderate transmission level. But I can tell you the percentage of the nucleic acid amplification test, the percent positivity, went down from 8.2% to 7.5%. So if I was doing this, creating this presentation yesterday, we would have seen both of those two major metrics in the moderate transmission level. So based on that, when we look at what does that mean for the new phased learning mode, we can see that while on Tuesday, when this was done, we were between moderate transmission to substantial transmission, since we had one of those two major factors in each of those areas. You know, today, we would be in the moderate transmission, all in that yellow area. But where we're seeing schools implementing those five key mitigation strategies, looking at K-12 schools being between full in-person instruction with six feet social distancing, to looking at elementary schools being in a hybrid mode, middle schools and high schools being in that same hybrid mode, and you see the slight difference between, on the athletics and extracurriculars, where under the moderate transmission, it's really talking about wearing masks and physical distancing, whereas in the substantial, they're really talking about only looking at outdoor sports. And so you will see that where we are right now with our kids returning on Monday, having our pre-K through second graders back in our buildings four days a week, knowing that on Monday, we're bringing back our third through fifth graders, our sixth and ninth graders, we are right on par. We have our, we're in the middle of fall sports right now, and so we are quite well-aligned to this new guidance from the CDC. And so, you know, one of the other mitigation factors that we have been able to provide to our staff, in addition to the five key mitigation strategies, is really getting them the vaccine. And so as of last Wednesday, we had nearly 7,000 employees, both full and part-time and temporary, that had received their first dose of the vaccine, and 462 had already received their second dose. And we continue to work with those who have missed their initial appointment due to having to isolate from an exposure, as well as our new hires to get them vaccinated. We had over 150 employees on our waitlist earlier this week, and we were finally given the green light to be able to bring them in on Wednesday. And so we continue to work. That list continues to grow and change as additional hires are made, or in some cases, people have requested the vaccine where previously they had not for whatever personal reasons. And so I think that list earlier today was back up to 50 employees on that waitlist, and we're hoping to get them in on Friday, so tomorrow. And so that's where we stand currently on the vaccination front. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Andy Janks, as he's going to give you more information. We told you we were updating our Health Updates page, and so, Mr. Janks, I'll turn it over to you.
Beth, thank you very much. The school division's commitment to public notifications and reporting of positive COVID-19 cases is ongoing. Dating back to last August, any time an individual who had been on our property reported a positive case to us, we listed that case, as well as the last known date that the case to us, we listed that case, as well as the last known date that the individual was in one of our buildings, campuses, or offices. And for the folks who are listening at home, you can still find this today by going to our main website, which is henricoschools.us, clicking on Health Committee Updates, which is listed under the section known as Hot Topics on the left-hand side of the page, if you are using a desktop computer. The aggregate list, of course, is in addition to the school-based notifications that went out from a principal every single time. As of this week and next, a number of updates and changes have gone or will go live for our employees, families, and the general public to see. For example, we will be reporting new data based on increased in-person learning, updated weekly, not just for classroom instruction, but also athletics and extracurricular activities. This would include the number of positive cases, the number of close contacts associated with those positive cases, the number of outbreaks between students and staff, and staff and students, as well as the locations where those positive cases were reported. Also posted under Hot Topics right now, we've been updating and communicating the existence of resources that include our new video toolbox, which includes short clips on topics such as a clean and safe bus ride, self-screening and a check of your symptoms, improvements to air handling equipment, wearing your mask, new desk cards, signage, and stickers, personal protective equipment for students and staff, and a day in the life of in-person learning. Aside from the web, the messages are being emailed and posted to our social media. Schools themselves are aware of these resources too, to be used at their discretion. In addition, this week, our elementary schools received a supply of flyers, magnets, window clings, and door hangers to remind students and families of the self-screening process that we ask for every morning, and those items should start arriving in homes as early as next week. We will continue, of course, to add to this material throughout the school year. And with that, I think I can turn it back over to Beth, but I will remain close by for any questions.
We're just, yes, thank you, Andy. And thanks for all you've done in your responsiveness to the Health Committee's requests. So, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Board members, I'll throw it over to Ms. Atkins first. We'll go this way this time. Ms. Atkins?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So, we, our paradigm has shifted, right? We've, as of the 22nd, we've got students back in the buildings, staff back in the buildings, and mass numbers. So, I kind of been reflecting, and I want to take just a moment real quick. The toll of the coronavirus on our schools and leaders and staff has made a lot of changes, and I just want to commend our staff members. I want to echo what our county manager said when he said that Dr. Cashwell was the best superintendent of Commonwealth Virginia, end quote, John Batoka's. And I want to also thank each member of our division, leadership team, school building staff, nurses, community, who helped with our vaccination efforts, IT for keeping everyone connected, cleaning professionals in our schools, Andy and his team for communication, family engagement, and anybody I've missed, I just want to thank you. But Dr. Tygen, as you have shared with us, the layered mitigation strategies from the CDC, I want to focus on three issues quickly, referencing social distancing, universal masking, and PPP, PPE, and cleaning protocols. I've been getting many questions from teachers and staff with concerns concerning protocols that may or may not be universally applied throughout the vision. Each school has its unique challenges and needs, we understand, but I want to make sure that the standards for ensuring the health, safety, equity applied at all schools, many of the questions that I have been asked are reoccurring. First one, in regards to PPE, are the principals of each school responsible for providing PPE for the teachers and staff? Is that the expectation?
There, we have provided like two masks for every, cloth masks for each one of our employees and each one of our students. We also have extra supplies on hand. There's actually a COVID liaison in their building that is really responsible for what the inventory is of the PPE and making sure that there's sufficient supplies within the school for visitors as well, as well as our students who might forget a mask now and then, a teacher, or you might have a mask and something breaks. And so, we have those materials there. We have them, some of the same things on our buses where they have extra masks, and also hand sanitizer, wipes, things like that.
So, along with the masks, are we providing the teachers with the cleaning materials for their classrooms?
Absolutely. They have cloth wipes that are the appropriate level of alcohol content. They have hand sanitizer. They have their refills within their building to be able to access more. So, if they need something, they just need to ask their liaison, and Courtney Berry and team will get the, get the supplies to the school.
Thanks. That's great to know. So, now with the CDC recommending that six-foot distancing, speak to me in regards to the three-foot distancing on the buses. Talk to me about how that's going to look and work as our kids go back.
Actually, on the bus, the way they go back and forth, there is that six-foot distancing the way they alternate between seats. So, I don't know if Mr. Pritchard's here. I'm not aware that...
I think I can cover some of that. You know, we certainly are following the CDC guidelines, and I know Mr. Ellis and the transportation team arranged our bus seating accordingly. I do know that because of the duration of time and the situation on the bus, some of those guidelines look different through the CDC guidelines than the guidelines they publish for classrooms, whereas kids are spending longer amount of time together. But where we have seen some variance there is where children, or students rather, who are in the same household, whether they be siblings or not, may sit next to each other. And so, it might be that someone sees kids sitting on the bus closer together than the distancing seating charts, but please know that the bus drivers have allowed that based on the way students reside in the household. And so, in cases where that mitigation strategy might not be in play, that, that would be the reason.
Well, I think that's great to note, because if I'm riding down the street and I've been cognizant of the distancing requirements, and I see kids on, children on buses, you know, sitting next to each other, I would assume that the mitigation strategy is not being utilized. So, thank you for clarifying that. So, Dr. Tygen, speak to, I know at one point, we talked about children eating lunch in classrooms. Well, I've heard some, one teacher sent me a question saying that they were asked to take their children to the cafeteria next week based upon lower enrollment in their classes. Is that true?
Some, some of our schools have requested the use of their cafeterias where they've put desks in them with the same, you know, barrier, desk barriers on them. It is very dependent on the number of students who have chosen within a school or within a grade level to be in person. And so, while that's not, and across the board, there are some schools that are able to do that. Yes, sir.
And I would add a point of clarification in addition to what Dr. Tygen has shared, that, you know, when we think, and we wanted our families and our students to understand that traditional cafeteria dining is not in play, that's still true, and that comes from the way not only the meals were provided through a cafeteria line, if you will, but also this idea of a mass or a large group. And so, because of the recommendations and mitigation strategies that don't allow for that large number of students present in one space, that's why we say cafeteria dining is not taking place as usual. That doesn't mean you might not have students dining in the cafeteria in a smaller number and distance, but what you likely wouldn't see is, or you should not see according to our plans is traditional meal service through the cafeteria lines and a packed cafeteria of, you know, multiple grade levels of students, though that space itself may well be utilized for dining, for a classroom, for any number of things with the mitigation strategies in place. And in some, as long as they don't exceed that large number of students, they may have a couple of classes eating in that space distanced.
Again, I think it's a great point of clarity, because it's very easily to misinterpret that we said we would not have children eating the cafeteria context, but not saying we're not using the cafeteria. So, real quick, also in this same vein, many of us have been following what's been going on in the state legislature, reference to local school divisions, specifically SB 1303 that passed the House and the Senate. If the governor signs that, what's that going to do to Wellness Wednesdays, which basically the bill says that we have to have five-day in-person school? What, what would happen? How are we on that?
The language in that bill, as I understand it, takes effect for the next school year term, though largely our practices are in compliance with what's proposed in that bill as it stands today. You know, I think for us, the challenge is going to be if we still find ourselves in a place where these mitigation strategies are still recommended by the Virginia Department of Education through CDC that ask for six feet distancing, the distancing on the bus. When you talk about the potential of your entire student body coming back for in-person learning, you know, you can't also use those mitigation strategies and serve that number of students in person. So, I think we're still, you know, thinking through what the impact is and how to deliver that in-person instruction, but also adhere to the mitigation that may well still be in play as we go into that timeframe.
Well, I appreciate that. So, I'm assuming that's going to be more to be determined, huh? Well, last question for me. Thank you, Dr. Tygen and Dr. Cashwell for kind of tag team. Quick question. So, can you speak to when we made the change to the meal distribution, I think March the 10th, it goes to effect? So, I guess I've had some questions raised with me in regards to persons having difficulty with one-day bulk meal pickup. Some families have limited transportation, no transportation, at the time when curbsides available. What are we doing? Are we doing anything to kind of figure out ways to help families in which this, this change has, has impacted them negatively?
At this point, we, we have planned the one-day as we're transitioning kids back into school and working on our transportation schedule. I mean, it's something certainly that we can continue to look at as, as we get a better handle on resources, once we know that kids are back in school and a routine is, is kind of established in the next two weeks. So, we'll go back and, and look at it. But right now, this was based on the resources we have and what we were anticipating. So, that may change.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Tygen.
We'll take that under consideration.
Madam Chair, thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Shea, did you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I look at these numbers every day, and it brings me so much delight to see the graphical representation of those numbers. I'll use the word plummeting, and, and with a continuous trend downward. It's, it's really fantastic. Can you talk to us a little bit about, so, in our previous metrics, we were looking at the total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last 14 days? That was a sum, correct?
Yes.
And then, how does that compare to, now that we're looking at the daily incident rate per 100,000 over seven days?
And they're, they're looking at like an average, so it's a sliding average. So, each day, you'll take the last seven days, divide by seven, then take the next. So, as each one goes down, you see the trend go down as well.
So, now, we're looking at an average?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because I know as this process has gone on, as we talked about at a board meeting prior this month, whenever that was, they voted together, Henrico has continued to follow the latest guidelines from the CDC and the VDH. And I know that has caused a lot of frustration with constituents that have opinions on both sides of this matter, that the goalposts are moving. But I just want to be really clear, Henrico, unlike some other localities, we have never reverse engineered these metrics to have the outcome that we want. We have used the metrics that have been put forth by the health experts and followed them, correct?
That is correct.
So, this is just another example that as we learn more about the science and the transmission, and as the CDC further refines what they're finding to be most important to safety, this is just a refinement of it, and we're going to follow it.
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic. And then, so as we continue to monitor this, I mean, I'm just like tickled yellow, we should say, that we are finding ourselves in the yellow. If we make it down to blue, and you know, this is obviously a hypothetical question, but if we make it down to blue, could that impact our in-person offerings to be perhaps less restrictive for the environments there?
As far as social distancing?
Correct.
Again, it would...
Or maybe recess, or you know, some of those extra pieces.
Well, and that depends on what the advice is from the CDC and the VDH as, as we keep going down. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, we will continue to follow, and again, I'll, I'll repeat for those listening, we have not reverse engineered any of this. We have not let politics decide what we want the outcome and reverse or engineered our metrics. We have used those passed down by CDC and VDH, and those who frankly know more than all of us do about epidemiology.
Well, and I think, you know, as, as time has gone on, there's more data from which that they can draw from. And so, while it can be really frustrating at times that it's, that there are changes, it's understandably so, because there was limited data in the beginning. And so, now they have a lot more data which to make a more, you know, to ground their decisions in.
Absolutely. And that's how science works.
Yes, it is.
And then, my last brief comment, as I want to just thank Mr. Jinks for adding, when we look at the new tracing and data on cases, for not only having cases, but also the contacts, I think that's really informative. It's informative for me, but hopefully for the public, on how well our mitigation is doing. I know it can be jarring to get that email from your principal that there is a case in the building, but the fact that then, you know, most frequently when there is a contact, that that contact does then not turn positive, that right there is evidence that our mitigation is working and our mitigation is strong. And so, I think by adding those contacts, it tells the whole story of our mitigation and our safety and our dedication to the safety of our students and our staff. So, that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Consella, did you have any?
Yes, I just have one thing. I know throughout this time, traditionally amidst our Health Committee updates, at times we've also had instructional things brought forward. I know a lot of what I've heard, my colleagues have already covered the science and health part, but I actually would like to know if we, if the board is going to have an update, perhaps maybe at our March 11th meeting, as to instructional items. How is it going in our schools? How is it going for those students going, attending virtually versus those in person? And what we're, so that we can share information about what we're hearing from our constituents.
Yes, ma'am. And if there's specific things, please feel free to let us know, and we'll make sure it's included in the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Consella will, directing the superintendent to add that to the agenda right now?
We will absolutely add that.
Because that wouldn't be part of the Health Update.
And I think rather than including it with the Health Update, we'll go ahead and separate that. But you're right, we have included a lot. Because it goes hand in hand, this health situation has influenced our instructional practices, and so, I think we're at a place where we could sort of separate those conversations, and particularly now that we have both in-person and virtual learners provide this board with an overview of where we are, what we're seeing as some successes and challenges. And if there are any specific questions you all would want us to address at that time, please don't hesitate to let us know. We'll include that.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Anything else, Ms. Consella?
Anything else, board members?
Thank you, Dr. Tygen. You can put on a different hat probably to come up here in a minute.
I think we'll give her a break for a moment. The next item I have is related to seeking your acceptance of a $5,000 increase in the jobs for Virginia graduates grant award funding from the Virginia Department of Education. And this additional funding brings now our total grant award to $30,000.
Is there a motion to accept the grant from the Virginia Department of Education?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second? Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The grant's approved.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board, for your approval there. I'm so excited on this next item to bring you an update and an overview related to the planned dual-language immersion program for what will be the new expanded Holiday Elementary, which we referenced earlier, will be opening in Fall of '21. As we've talked about with the opening, both of the new high school facilities, as well as this elementary facility, the new construction has offered an opportunity for Henrico County Public Schools to do some reflecting programmatically and think about how we might adjust to meet community needs. And so, for those of you who may have been following this along since the inception of the Holiday Project and breaking ground and getting that building going, you might recall some community input around how to best serve that community, resulting in the proposal of this program, which will now be coming to fruition. So, a familiar face has come to the dais back with us, though he probably feels like he's never left, and we're happy about that. Dr. Rich Hall is going to be leading a presentation along with, with Mrs. Stockman, and we're going to find out what we have to look forward to at Holiday Elementary related to Spanish immersion. And so, I'm going to turn it over to them to share that information with you, and then, of course, open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And Ms. Stockman and I, thank you so much. I've both had both of our shots, so I think we're a little bit safe to stand this close, if that's okay. I hope Ms. Gilbert doesn't tackle us up here. So, we, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, Ms. Stockman, and I are delighted today to bring you an update on the dual-language immersion program at Holiday Elementary School. As we begin every conversation with a focus on our students, their learning... conversation with a focus on our students, their learning, and our teaching, students are always at the forefront of our decision-making. In fact, they set the path for us to unpack our why. Building upon our Henrico Schools' mission and vision statements, our strategic plan provides insights into deliberate actions to ensure success for every child. Here are just a couple of excerpts that inform our work in providing our students with the supports to be successful lifelong learners. Encouraging multicultural awareness, providing authentic learning experiences, as well as honoring our students' native languages and cultures are among the many ways we build the students' agency and increase instructional relevance.
Now, when we think of foreign language programs, such as many of us may have had in high school or college, or as we refer to them now, world languages, we often think of the goal as bilingualism or speaking another language. The focus here, though, was more deliberate in growing not only speaking and listening skills, but also reading and writing skills, bilingualism, and by literacy. So we just don't teach them about a language. We teach them to use that language as they engage in other academic content. The power of learning in context cannot be underscored enough in this model. The underpinning of all of this is the desire to empower our students with multicultural awareness that prepares them for citizenship in an ever-increasingly diverse society. Within all of this is always the focus on our students' academic capacity and growth. So it's important to note that our approach to creating the curriculum, designing innovative lessons, and assessing both linguistic skills and content skills are all rooted in proven research-based strategies of second language acquisition. We will seek to achieve a balanced enrollment of both Spanish learners and Spanish speakers, as well as boys and girls. Students will receive approximately half of their daily instruction in Spanish, and then the other half of their instruction in English. We will do this by having two partner teachers on one grade level. One Spanish-speaking teacher will have his or her students for the first half of the day. At midday, she will switch classes with his English-speaking colleague and teach those students for the remainder of the day, to be more precise. Students will receive their math and science instruction with the Spanish-speaking teacher for half of the day, and then their language arts and social studies instruction with their English-speaking teacher for the other half of the day. Our reading about and research about DLI programs and our own experiences illustrate that math and science do not require the language load as the other two content areas. In thinking about daily instruction, we should highlight that this is not intended to replace the support of the needs of our English language learners. LEAP services will continue for identified students. Also, we will have structures in place for students who struggle with reading in English and/or in Spanish via our intervention planning and program. It should be noted that this program is intended solely for students who live in the Holiday attendance zone. Variance requests specifically for this purpose would not meet the current criteria for approval. We could certainly explore expanding the program to other schools in future years. So please know that students enrolled in this program will continue to be held accountable to the Virginia Standards of Learning in all content areas, regardless of the language of instruction. The beauty of these programs is that they use a language as a conduit for learning and not in isolation. To support outcomes in the growing number of DLI, dual-language immersion programs, success across the Commonwealth, Virginia has newly proposed standards of learning, which, for the first time, now have standards for dual-language programs. The vote on this by the Virginia Board of Education is to be in March. Students enrolled in dual-language programs in other Virginia districts have achieved levels at levels greater than their non-DLI peers for over a long period of time. One district measured these outcomes for more than 15 years, noting such growth in every single year. Supporting students' linguistic abilities in their native language deepens their abilities in a partner language. Literacy is the one, and the one supports literacy in the other, thus supporting our goal of students reading on grade level. Certainly, students who speak two or more languages fluently will have enhanced job opportunities, even in our ever-more-diverse society. Additionally, we support our students by developing a stronger cross-cultural awareness and respect for other cultures. Lastly, but oh-so-importantly, in growing that lifelong learner, our students become stronger communicators as a result.
So let's take a moment to look back at where we've been. With a proposal for a Brooklyn-area elementary school beginning back in 2017, we began a discussion regarding potential programming for this expansion or for the school. Consideration was given to a variety of projects, such as year-round schooling, a STEM academy, as well as this dual-language immersion concept. At each community and school meeting we held in the summer of 2018, consensus swelled in favor of this DLI program for the Holiday area. As you see here, our first site visits occurred in Virginia Beach in the spring of 2019. Upon our return, we formed a central office steering committee to continue our exploration of DLI programming. In the spring and summer of 2019, we brought information to the Holiday staff and to our school board at the time. Then in the fall of 2019, planning focused on identifying additional resources in additional sister districts where we could observe programs in action. Mrs. Olson, our principal at Holiday at the time, Ms. Stockman and I were fortunate to visit programs in both Fairfax and Albemarle Counties in January of 2020. Our colleagues in both districts were most gracious in sharing their experiences and their materials, and our excitement for this program at Holiday only grew. At the Virginia Dual Language Educators' Network Conference in Chesterfield later that same month, the three of us were fortunate to learn directly from Doctors Virginia Collier and Wayne Thomas, the two foremost researchers in dual-language immersion instruction. Their research is compelling regarding the growth of students' academic, as well as social-emotional capacity as a result of in programs such as these. We knew we were on the right track for our students at Holiday. Certainly, we had hoped to dive more deeply into the work in spring of 2020, but we all know that things took a different turn in February and March of that year. And our attention had to focus on the needs of our learners, our teachers, and our communities. So this fall, our programming and our research has focused more on the day-to-day development and implementation of a school-based program, or in other words, turning theory into action. We've worked to develop application protocols or ways to opt-in, as well as communication tools and timelines. During this work, we've relied primarily on two resources: our Department of Education's Dual Language Immersion Education document, the Center for Applied Linguistics: Guiding Principles for DLI. And if approved in March, we will certainly add the new Virginia Dual Language Immersion Standards of Learning as another primary resource. And now, looking forward, the exciting part. As we move into the spring, our focus will be to activate our plan. We have shared this update with our team members there at Holiday and have invited them to become part of a site-based steering committee to ensure the programs fit within our community. A professional learning community supported by Brooke Thompson and our Department of Professional Learning and Leadership is deepening our understanding of the program and how it will support our students. Along with our colleagues in the Department of Human Resources, we will coordinate division-wide communication regarding staffing, seeking to find potential candidates within our own ranks. Of course, we're looking for folks who are Spanish-speaking and who have an endorsement in elementary education. At the same time, we'll begin our formal communication with our Holiday community. And by June of 2021, we will have identified our very first cohort of kindergarten students for the Holiday Dual Language Immersion Program. To support these efforts, we plan to identify a dedicated person in the, a dedicated coordinator in the person of a second ASP at Holiday. While this individual will serve as an associate principal as all others in the district, he or she will be charged with coordinating the program as it grows. As such, a key requirement of employment will be Spanish proficiency. We also appreciate your consideration just moments ago of a second librarian to support the growth of this program, as well as the 10 additional preschool classrooms that have become welcomed at Holiday for 2122. We will add one grade level each subsequent year at Holiday. For example, we will expand the first grade in fall of 2022, second grade the year after that, and so on. This would allow for the first group of students to begin a similar program at the middle school level in the fall of 2027. Again, we thank you for your time today to receive this update, and we'll be happy to receive any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions? I'll start with Ms. Contella, since Holiday is in your district.
I am so excited. And I know Mrs. Cox, our former Brooklyn District School Board member, if she's listening or watching today, I know she shares, she shares our excitement about what's coming to Holiday and our students and families and staff there. I know that you went through how the, what the program looks like and how the division landed on dual-language immersion. Why specifically was Holiday chosen?
So Holiday, as we know, is one of our two or three schools with the largest ESL enrollment. It's also, I won't, I would be remiss if I did not mention Ms. Kim Olson as the former principal of Holiday and her passion for bringing new-age programming to her school, whether it's being the first lighthouse school in the Commonwealth of Virginia or any, any other program. But when she first heard about this notion of dual-language immersion and being able to grow that possibility, not only for her English language learners, but for all of her students, and seeing the power that it brings to literacy in both a first language and a second language. So that was a big piece of why we considered Holiday.
Okay. And, and yes, absolutely. Mrs. Olson's enthusiasm for this program and for Holiday, we hope she's enjoying her retirement. So, so thank you for mentioning her. Next up is, for clarity, for this program, just so that no one misunderstands, it's going to be an HCPS-developed and staffed program within an HCPS Holiday Elementary School? Okay.
Yes.
It's all homegrown based on
Can you please say yes?
Yes. It is all homegrown based on best practices and research. Yes, ma'am. We're not, we're not contracting with any other group. Ms. Stockman and I are working with the staff there and the amazing leadership in the building, as well as our leadership throughout the county to ensure that this program meets the needs of the students at Holiday.
Well, and if I may
But it's an HCPS program.
Well, thank you. And if, if I may, for those watching, even Dr. Cashwell has former experience in dual-language immersion. So I know we're, we're well-equipped to execute this program. And then the next question would be, do we expect to potentially expand this program at any other elementary schools? Or will Holiday be the only one? Because I did, I am aware this is for zone Holiday students.
I will take that one. Because you're right, Mrs. Contella, I do have some experience. One of the highlights of my career in education was serving as the principal at an immersion program school. I also have a child who went through an elementary program like the one that's been proposed here, and certainly know from my colleagues in other school divisions with similar programs and some of those that were visited in purposes of planning this, the tremendous benefits that programs such as the one we've heard about here can bring our students, and what a rich experience. So I think we'll be certainly learning from the program at its inception here at Holiday, and, you know, certainly think there's an opportunity for scalability. You know, as you mentioned, this is a homegrown effort, and I think getting that magic sauce and formula down to find out what works well at Holiday and what might potentially work well at other Henrico schools, there's, there's a lot of potential and room to replicate programming.
Great, thank you. And then just lastly, if I would just ask that the superintendent consider which middle school location we may expand to, especially as we're doing comprehensive planning and budgeting and specialty centers and looking at capacity in, in all of our buildings, if you could just think about this in the future?
Absolutely. Probably the near future. So you kind of saw that timeline unfold into here 2027. Seems like it's tomorrow in some ways. And so we want to make sure that the students who will be kindergartners this fall, as they are exiting the fifth grade, have, if they wish to, the opportunity to continue the study into the middle school years, because research and best practice tells us that that kind of a trajectory is one that can really put students on the path to continued success. And so I, we will be intending to offer that, and we'll need to, to get the logistics developed for a number of reasons, to assure the students who are in the current program, as well as we understand the impact on any number of factors such as capacity.
Thank you so much. That, that's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Contella. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you. I am so excited to hear about this program. As someone who admittedly struggles with auditory processing, which is why you'll see me frequently scribbling notes up here to help process, language acquisition was really hard for me, especially foreign language acquisition. And my literacy skills always far surpassed my lingual skills in it. But as I've learned more about our ESL populations and our native language speakers, I've learned often their lingual skills far out surpassed their literacy skills. And so seeing both of these approaches is really essential to grow both of those things. And so a couple of questions. When we talk about the teacher swap and the choice to have math and science in Spanish because of a smaller language load, and then reading and social studies in English, will there ever be days where those are swapped in order for students to acquire the correct vocabulary in the alternate language for, say, like addition and subtraction and those sorts of things?
Certainly. And because math and science, with that lower language load, as you mentioned, part of the vocabulary of addition and subtraction are part of the content, are part of the skills that will be done. So like your experience with second language acquisition in more of a transitional setting, this is a truly immersive environment. And so with a lot of graphics and supports, again, kindergarten is a beautiful place to start because it's so graphic and vocabulary-rich, they're going to be receiving all of those supports in the target language. Some of the schools and programs that we have visited have discussed the concept of changing the content that is taught in the target, well, in, in the second language. Some of them do that on a nine-week basis, others do it at a semester, some by grade level. So there's a variety of ways that you could incorporate, then, social studies and language arts in Spanish, and then have math and science in English. Those are still ways that we are investigating. But for kindergarten, we wanted the best opportunity for the graphic supports, for the vocabulary-rich environment, and we thought that was the best, you know, for kindergarten based upon our experiences in visiting, visiting other school divisions.
I think, and I'm going to add to that, I think that was an excellent explanation. And so we see in programs, you know, dependent on what subject area is used, whether it's at the elementary or middle school level, to be taught in Spanish for that immersive experience, that might, for example, switch at various times by grade level. For example, you may have been getting your math and science in Spanish at the elementary level, and when you go on to your middle school programming, all of a sudden it may be social studies or something. Or as Mrs. Stockman mentioned, some may choose, you know, to do it by a nine weeks or grade level. But what wouldn't be the case, and what might have been part of your question, is the idea of going back and reteaching the content in English. So in other words, you've spent, you know, X number of time on these concepts in math, and we're switching only to reteach the concepts now in English. That wouldn't be the case. That's not how the programming works. And, you know, there's, you know, great evidence of students being able to acquire that content in the new language with those right supports.
Right. Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Cashwell. Exactly. It would not be a reteaching. You know, Henrico is, is part of a group known as VADLAN. That's the Virginia Dual Language Educators Network. And I work with that group, and that is a Virginia-only consortium of school divisions that have dual-language programs. And so because we're all singing from the same sheet of music with content and grade-level standards, they have been extremely generous with their offerings and support and meeting and visits with us to make sure that Henrico gets started on the right foot with this.
No, that's fantastic. And y'all are obviously both way more knowledgeable about this than I am. But I just think about it from, you know, a physics teacher's perspective of, you know, lots of word problems and that sort of thing in math. And it can be challenging for all of our students, but particularly our elementary school students, to understand that subtract and difference and all mean the same thing. And so they understand the concept of subtracting, the algorithm of a subtracting. They're working to find those words. And so I want to make sure our students not only know that menos means that they should subtract, but also difference. Yeah, yeah. See, I do
Bueno y vamos, eh?
It takes me a while, but I do have a little retention.
Excellent.
So, you know, just those things. And then my only other question is, is this going to be an application process or a lottery process?
So this actually becomes an opt-in process. Our hope for this year is to have one class Our hope for this year is to have one class, the two classrooms, one with the Spanish-speaking teacher, one with the English-speaking teacher. Certainly, as word of this program grows and desire to be in the program, we would like to expand and have additional classrooms on each grade level. But for this coming year, it would be an opt-in. So we're going to do a lot of communication with our families and allow them to select into this program, again, maintaining those balances of boys and girls as well as Spanish speakers and Spanish learners.
And so if that does it balance, what would that look like?
So to answer your question very clearly, it is a type of lottery system. So as we look to see, we are very purposeful in placing students, but it is a lottery-type system and we hope to maintain about a 40-60 ratio that the research bears out, that you can't have 90% Spanish speakers, 10% English, or vice versa. You have to have at least a balance of about 40% to 60%.
Well, I appreciate, well, I hope everything, the numbers just magically work and everyone who wants to participate gets to participate. And then when is that deadline approximately to opt-in as we look at publicizing this to our community?
So again, that's a piece that we are coordinating as we set our deadlines and communicate regarding kindergarten registration and work with our Department of Elementary Education in that regard. We want to mirror that process as well as look at our other, our other centers throughout the county so that we have some continuity across all of our programming. So we haven't set a specific deadline, but we will be communicating that out to all of our families very clearly.
Fantastic. Well, thank you both for your work and I wish you the best of luck on this launch. It is very exciting. It is very exciting for our, for our county to look at this new frontier. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Reverend Cooper?
Well, again, I just echo the excitement and exhilaration and enthusiasm of my peers. And I just want to say, I look forward to the activation of your plan, look forward to your findings, look forward to hearing the success and when you report back to us. So, you know, good luck with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I share in the eagerness to learn about the execution of the DLI program and its potential to improve literacy. A big component of learning to read is being able to learn how to read in your native language. And so I'm really excited to learn about that. Are there any costs associated with the program outside of salaries?
So we have set aside some minimal funding just to get us started for this year and we're very appreciative of that. But there are no additional costs. These are all human resources elements that would be present in our school in any regard. So there are no additional costs.
And so the positions you're speaking of, we've already allocated funding for?
I'll let Dr. Cashwell speak to that.
Yeah, so, you know, the teachers would already be present for the students. So the difference is we would be seeking a teacher who also meets the requirements for Spanish immersion. So there are some differences in the qualifications for staff, but the, we would have been hiring those positions anyway for the classroom. And so, you know, there are some, you know, in putting, for example, library resources together and that sort of thing, because we would have already been purchasing new books for the library for the expanded edition, we would simply be also selecting titles in Spanish. So those funds were already allocated for the purchase of books. In other words, we had already allocated teacher positions. It's just a matter of funneling those resources to those that are qualified to teach the positions and then resources that are language-appropriate.
Okay. So that doesn't take away from any existing positions?
That's correct.
This was already planned for. That's wonderful. Thank you for that. Are there any implementation plans that have been memorialized yet? I know we're very early, but I'm very curious as to the execution. I'm pretty sure, you know, you've already had the discussions, but I don't know if we've memorialized the how.
And that's our next piece. Actually, Ms. Docman and I are both attending the VADLAN conference that will occur this Saturday, just to gain more knowledge from our colleagues throughout the state. So we've really been focusing on the communication plan as well as the application process, the lottery process, and getting some research on how to actualize all of this in the classroom. That's the next piece of our work in the spring.
Wonderful. I think as that process goes along, I would like to also understand how our teachers are feeling about it. I'm sure they're excited, but I also want to understand what their thoughts are as you execute it. So that's why I was asking about the implementation plan as we move forward in a year that's not been normal. I'm very interested in that. And so as you move along, the, you know, I want you memorialize it. And once it gets close to a final state, I'd love to have an email with that information.
And not to take up a great deal of time because I know you have much work to get to, we did have our very first site-based committee meeting just this week. I have to say, the teachers at Holliday are amazed, as all of our teachers are throughout the entire district. But on the second day of having pre-K through second-grade students in the building, they sat for an hour and a half in a site-based committee meeting and a PLC book study, and they are excited. We had kindergarten through fifth-grade representation, we had office staff, we had our family advocate. They are, ESL was represented. And they're thrilled to have a program that is going to support the literacy needs of their, and the language and culture needs of their students.
This is great work. I'm glad the family advocate was present. You know, I was thinking about cultural competency when you were sharing some of the work and with the DLI program and thinking about the immersion, whether it's Spanish and English or another language. We're also interested, talking about a little bit of heritage and tradition as well. So I'm very pleased that you have the family advocate present and you're thinking about cultural competencies as well. So very pleased with what you shared. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just echo a little bit of what Mrs. Kinsella said, but add to it, to thank Mrs. Kinsella for her advocacy on behalf of Holliday and representing this board in that effort and, and all that you're doing is amazing. Excuse me, but to also add my appreciation and recognition of Mrs. Cox, who used to be on this board, for being part of the process in the beginning. And I know she's excited to see it's coming, all of that hard work coming to fruition. I mean, it's so great when something finally starts happening and you get to open a new building and all that. And Dr. Holliday, it's good to see you again.
It's nice to see you. Thank you.
Nice to have you back.
Feels like coming home.
Yeah, absolutely. But I think we're all right.
Well, hearing no other questions, I also thank our presenters and all who have been involved in this effort outside of those who are standing before us today because it is indeed exciting to see a lot of work near the point of coming to fruition. So appreciate and we'll look forward to updates. Thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair. Members of the board, the next two items I have for you are related to our technology program. So Mr. Brian Maddox is going to come forward for those. The first one is related to our Middle School Network Refresh RFP. And so he's going to provide an overview of that effort because I will be seeking your approval of a contract for this effort in March, on March 25th at that meeting. So this provides you some information upfront. And then the next item, so that he can roll into that without me having to pause for another introduction, will be related to the high school laptop refresh RFP, which I'll also be seeking your approval of March 25th. So, Mr. Maddox, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Cashwell, and also our school community members. Today I have a couple of informative updates to share on the request for proposal for the Middle School Network Infrastructure Refresh and also the request for proposal for the high school student and staff laptop refresh as well. The Middle School Network Refresh Request for Proposal, known as an RFP, is a necessity to ensure the network infrastructure is up to date, to continue to serve student and staff needs, to connect to the Internet and digital resources. Today's update will cover multiple points to provide an understanding of the history of the network infrastructure in the middle schools and administrative locations today, the request for proposal process that was followed, the proposed solutions, and also next steps to complete a contract with the awarded offer in the months to come. Historically and with the current RFP, the Middle School Network Refresh covers all network infrastructure required to enable connectivity in all middle schools, program sites, and division office locations. The current Middle School Network Refresh includes various critical network components that work together to provide seamless access to systems, content, and the Internet. Typically, the network in schools and offices are refreshed every six or seven years to ensure that the network is up to date. And due to the cost of such an effort, HCPS engages in a lease to pay for the infrastructure over the years at typically a very low interest rate. Now, the cost for the prior lease that is ending was $852,000 per year, and that was over the last six years. The current network design under the ending lease is one Wi-Fi point, or access point, as we call them, connection in every other classroom in the middle schools with expanded signal coverage for the classrooms that are in between. So for example, you would have a classroom with an access point for connection and then the adjacent classroom would not have one and then the next one would have one and it would actually provide bleed-over coverage. Typically, non-traditional learning spaces like cafeterias, gymnasiums, were not included to provide Wi-Fi coverage. And that's the way the current middle schools are today. Over the years since the last refresh seven years ago, the requests from schools for Wi-Fi access in non-traditional learning spaces in middle schools has increased and the need for access to more digital resources that require more bandwidth and additional speed has also increased. The current request for proposal meets these requests and the needs for the years to come. The RFP process began in December of last year with the original request published to offers to submit solutions for the Middle School Network Refresh. Since then, division, school division RFP committee members have met with participating offers to review their proposed solutions. And the committee was comprised of various individuals from the school division's technology department, the finance department, and also the division leadership team as represented in this slide. On this slide are some general specifics of an overview of the network efforts to be completed over the summer and the next steps in the months to come to complete the RFP process towards a contract. The interior of each middle school, program sites, and administrative locations are scoped to have a strong and reliable Wi-Fi signal so learning and work can continue anytime, anyplace within the school building at the middle school level. Every classroom and common area will have a Wi-Fi signal for student and staff connectivity, which also now includes gymnasiums, cafeterias, and auditoriums, for example. And we'll be having one access point in every school classroom as part of this refresh effort. As part of the planning, HCPS will partner with the awarded offer to work around all school-related events and learning during the summer to ensure there's no disruptions to any learning that's happening in the middle schools. The effort will be rather expansive, covering all the middle schools and also 14 unique other locations, including program sites similar to the Adult Education Center, the James River Juvenile Detention Facility, to name a few, and also administrative locations like the Central Office Building will be included. As with all technologies, network infrastructure significantly improves and gets faster every year. Our network options for this effort is a monumental improvement to what was put in place seven years ago. These improvements provide a new, high-performing, reliable connection to additional bandwidth and resources that is also more secure and more scalable for the future. And given the critical requirements like selecting the right network infrastructure and design, flexibility in summer schedules, a compressed summer timeline to get the work done before the next school year starts, the division needed a solid offer to partner with. The choice of the RFP process was the right approach to ensure the division received a full turnkey solution as opposed to a lowest bid option. And below here is a timeline of kind of where we started in February, earlier in the month, with the RFP orals that we had, with the offers, and moving up towards a school board contract award at the end of March. So with every RFP, we have scoring criteria that we follow to score the different offers and the solutions they bring to the table for us to consider. So the criteria that was used to score the proposals and presentations received with price and requirements being the highest weighted, as you see here. You may notice that price is listed as the highest-weighted criteria here, and that's because we have the option as a school division to file for reimbursement of network expenditures under the E-Rate program, which is a federal program with the FCC. E-Rate Category 2 is a reimbursement that allows those expenses to assist with funding and ensuring that school networks are up to date, high-performing, and secure. So that's why that was weighted the highest. So here's some key dates that are coming up in the next three to five months up until the start of the next school year. So at the end of March, at the last meeting, I plan to come back to the school board for an update on the offer that was selected or recommended by the committee, a contract award recommendation. The equipment will then arrive in May and then we'll configure it and deploy it to the schools over the summer. And the network project should be complete by early August at the latest. So we'll make sure we get that done well in advance before school starts. So next steps, again, return to the school board in late March, answer any remaining questions you may have at that time, and again, announce the recommendation and request the contract approval and signature. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question, all right, we'll get to the question portion. Ms. Atkins, do you have questions?
I do. Thank you so much for sharing this. I'm going to wait until the emergency passes by. So one question I do have is, have we conducted a study to understand the current state of access and accessibility when it comes to broadband or telecommunication?
So we, what we do is when we actually engage with an offer like for the Middle School Refresh or even the administrative locations or program sites, part of that first initial engagement is a design conversation. So they come into our buildings based on what we've requested as far as like the experience we want teachers and students to have and also working staff members. We say, this is what we want the experience to look like. We want a strong Wi-Fi signal throughout the entire building. And they come in and they actually do a design with us based on the recommended equipment that was proposed. And as part of that design conversation, we ensure that they deliver what we were asking to be done. So we have that coverage of the entire facility or that building or school.
Thank you for sharing that. I, I think I want to follow up with the, with the same question just a bit because in that design concept conversation, and you are the expert, and I'm just going to share my experience. So in that design concept, is the discussion more around meeting the needs of what we request or are they going to actually do a study based on current state?
So we actually have a really good understanding of what the current state looks like. And based on that, we actually scoped the RFP. So when we actually drafted the RFP, we indicated and shared what the current state was for the current school buildings. And then we actually requested that they actually provide a solution that actually would meet the requirements of the new RFP.
Wonderful. So I think that's great that we've done that. I would love to have a look at it because I've often wondered what our current state was based off of access and accessibility. So if we've conducted an access and accessibility study to know what telecommunications look like, in that way, we can do a comparison on where we are. And then once your work is done through the vendor or partnership, we can better assess progress. And so that would be my goal. So if we have that data already, we can look at percentages, we can understand accessibility and usage, we can segment it out by district. And then once this deployment effort happens, we'll be able to have a baseline on progress. So I'd love for you to share that information with me as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Absolutely. And one thing I'll share too is, over the last six to seven years, we've actually also, in addition to monitoring the bandwidth that's actually coming in and out of the school and the needs and adjusting the bandwidth to meet the needs of the school as it's changed over seven years when there's been more demands and adding more bandwidth, we've also gone into quite a few of the schools that actually said they're not having the experience in the classrooms or the connectivity that they would need to have a seamless experience. So we've actually gone into those classrooms and we've used tools that identify things like interferers that would impact the ability for the Wi-Fi connection from the Wi-Fi connection points or the access points and identifying any interferers or external things that might actually be causing some problems in the classroom with the Wi-Fi signal to the devices like the laptops.
Absolutely. And if you think about the Rhina-Sanston and Holland Springs area, another reason I'm interested in that data because there are some barriers that I think locally that we are not able to solve. However, the data that you provide to me will help me understand progress with whatever work. I'm very excited. work that our vendor or partnership will provide, you know, given broadband in our area, sometimes the lines are under the railroads. So regardless of how much you expand, there are going to be some significant barriers and so that's why that needs assessment, not just access, but the accessibility points are so critical. So again, I'm eager to see the study that you guys have had. So thank you so much.
Sure, absolutely.
Reverend Cooper?
Yes, I'm fine, thanks.
Ms. Shea?
Thank you so much. I know that this year of all years, we've really learned the importance of having strong internet connection.
Yes.
So just one question and one comment. It looks like we're going to double the access points in the schools. I know we'll have to see what the RFP is coming at, but do you ballpark expect the bids to also double since we're doubling the access point?
So I can share specifics like in a closed session. The next time when I come back in March, I'll give you specific financial information that I can also share in public session, but we're still in the middle of the RFP process, so I can't give you any specifics in a public forum. But I will share with you that the costs are actually relatively low, even though you are correct, we are adding more access points. But one thing I'll share is when we did the high school network refresh sometime ago, a couple of years ago, we actually complimented a lot of the infrastructure in the middle schools and the elementary schools to keep the cost down for this current RFP. So even though we are doubling the access points, we kind of front-loaded some of that in the past with another refresh at the high school level that happened about a year and a half ago.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And then just a comment on our evaluation, let's see the actual words used, my bad. Yeah, the evaluation criteria, I just wanted to say that I am glad to see that while pricing is heavily weighted, it doesn't make up the majority weight of the evaluation because while we want to be frugal with our dollars, we also want to be smart with them. No matter what RFP we go with, it's going to be a significant investment and we want to make sure that we're really getting the most out of our investment. So I appreciate you sharing that evaluation criteria with us.
Yep, absolutely. And this RFP is, so the lease that's currently ending, that was an over $5 million lease. So that's a lot of money. So absolutely, we definitely want to look at the price. We want to be good stewards of the financial resources that we get from the division, but we also want to take into account, of course, like the functional requirements. Does it meet the needs? Does it work? Does it support the right experience for students and teachers?
Yeah, absolutely. It's not a deal if it doesn't meet our needs.
Exactly.
So thank you for that and I look forward to the updates.
Ms. Consella?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I did have one other question.
Yes, Ms. Atkins, go right ahead.
Can you share with me, I know you shared it was, this deployment would be for middle schools, is grad and AVR included in this?
I think AVR is included in this refresh proposal. Yes, no, I believe it is.
Okay, and so grad is not?
So I think grad is as well. So it's essentially, so it's the middle schools and every other program location that we have in addition to Central Office. So it includes all those other locations. They're all taken into account. So there's like a total of, you know, the 12 middle schools and then there's 14 other locations of which it encompasses those other locations and I can give you an exact list of all those other locations if you'd like it.
I would like that.
Sure.
Because that is a question, is AVR and grad included? And I want to be accurate if I say yes. I would love that.
Absolutely. I'll get that confirmation for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else? We're good? All righty. Okay. I think he's going to roll right into the next one, the next item.
I'm going to roll right into the next one.
And again, this is the high school laptop refresh, RFP information.
So following a similar presentation format, the high school laptop refresh request for proposal is critical to ensure that staff and students' learning device is up-to-date to continue to provide an optimal learning technology experience for students and for staff at the high school level. Today's update will cover multiple points to provide an understanding of the history of the laptop in use in high schools today, the request for proposal process that was followed, proposed solutions, and next steps going forward up until a contract expected at the end of March at that school board meeting. It looks like I was at the end, but now at the beginning. So historically and with the current request for proposal, the high school laptop refresh covers all laptop support services needed over the next four years, the laptop itself for staff and students, and all related server infrastructure that's located at each high school to support the students and staff and access to applications, login services, and so on. Henrico County Public Schools was one of the first, if not the very first, to provide a learning device to high school students back in 2000 in a partnership with Apple. A few years thereafter, in 2005, Henrico County Public Schools began to transition to laptops for most grade levels with the exception of being the earliest learners using iPads in elementary and Chromebooks for grades one to five since 2018. Over the last 10 years or so, the laptop selection process has transitioned from a technology-driven decision, which it was 10-plus years ago, to more of a learning-centric decision because the learning device is critical to meet the learning needs of teachers, all staff, at different learning levels. The technology, of course, continues to improve every year with new features and models from many manufacturers that are versatile and support all types of learning, whether that be in the classroom, at home, or anywhere else. Ultimately, the laptop considered for selection must be able to connect to cloud and digital resources, which we actually learned a lot more about this year, and also that it's reliable in any learning environment, whatever that may be. The request for proposal began in November of last year with the original request published to offers to submit solutions for the high school laptop refresh. Since then, school division RFP committee members, 18 of them total, of which two-thirds were directly school-affiliated, staff, students, or instructional personnel, have been met, have been meeting with participating offers to review proposed solutions and laptops. The committee was comprised of high school students, teachers, principals, the director of school leadership for high schools, and also the teaching, learning, and innovation staff members, plus technology staff members, a division leadership team member, and other department representatives such as finance and general services. Laptops in schools are refreshed via an RFP every four years to ensure the technology is the latest high-performing and reliable device. Due to the cost of such an effort, HCPS engages also in a lease for the devices, the laptops, to pay for them over the four years also at a very low interest rate. And you can see here, we have some details of what the current environment looks like. And you can see we have currently the Dell laptop in the schools for high school staff and students. There's just over 18,000 of those at the high school level and you can also see the last refresh was in the summer of 2017 and the annual cost is $4.362 million a year. When you break that down to the cost per laptop, it's about $953 per laptop, which includes all the support services and the repair services as well. To share some general specifics of the effort and when we expect work to be completed in the months to come with the high school laptop imaging or configuration, the building process, and the server infrastructure deployment over the summer. The new high school laptops will be available for students and staff in approximately early to mid-August, per the current planned timeline below. Any student needs or exceptions to retain their current laptop over the summer for credit recovery, summer school, or unique learning needs will be permitted once requests are approved. In the current high school laptop RFP, the committee also considered Chromebooks, and I wanted to mention that, to see if those devices would be an option for high school students as an alternative to a laptop. There's been a lot of in-depth conversations among the committee members regarding laptops versus Chromebooks. And when I come back again in March, I'll have the recommendation for you that came back from the committee about the device and the offer. The laptops and Chromebooks presented were evaluated by each committee member to be durable, functional, reliable, and high-performing. It was critical and requested that all offers present laptop solutions that included a full warranty service for any accidental damage. This guaranteed that the student always had a device readily available in their hands for learning and the division did not incur unknown dynamic costs for unknown device Similarly to the network refresh effort also this summer, given the compressed summer top, the summer timeline to get the work done and the nature of selecting the right offer to provide the right services and laptop or devices over the next four years, we needed a solid partner to partner with. The choice of request for proposal process was the right approach to ensure the schools and the division received a full turnkey solution as opposed again to a lowest-price The committee has taken the defined needs requirements in the current scope and is currently in the process of evaluating each offer's proposal using the criteria that I'll share on the next slide, like I did for the middle school network. And below is the general timeline of, the timeline for up until the end of March contract The criteria that was used to score the proposals and presentations received are shown here. You may notice that many of the criteria are weighted relatively closely to each other with not one really kind of standing above any of the others, like it was on the last for the middle school network. This reflects the overall nature of this RFP to engage with the right vendor partner, to provide the right device, services, and relationship, and also the right price to best meet the needs of students, staff, and the division. So this is really a true reflection of across the board, all those different factors came into play to make the decision. Here again is a timeline of what it's going to look like starting in March with the award and the contract up until pretty much the early part of August where laptops will be distributed to staff and all the work that happens over the summer to get them ready and then around the middle of August, having them ready for students, whatever the plans may be for next year. So again, next steps, I'll return again next month requesting a recommendation and approval for the offer that we would like to award to and also contract approval and signature for the contract. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, board members?
Different.
Looks the same?
Different topic.
We're starting with Ms. Shea.
Yes.
Do you have any questions on this one?
I do not.
Okay. Reverend Cooper?
I do.
Ms. Atkins?
I do, thank you. So, sitting here, I'm smiling under my mask. I just wish you could see that because I am very grateful that you included students on your committee. I want you to really take my compliment to you to heart. I think your approach is a great example of inclusiveness and diversity and you've shown this since March, you and your team. I think I've shared that with you before. You know, sometimes we get a bit lost in trying to deliver, deliver, deliver. Sorry. I just want you to know that it is noticed that you and your team are listening to students who are using this equipment and that your work is moving you and your team towards excellence and sharing your time and your skills and your service and during a time where students are really moving forward in civic engagement, I just want you to know they know that you're looking beyond just what's on the surface and including them really demonstrates that you care. So thank you and your team.
Yeah, thank you for that. And one thing I want to share too for the board too is, you know, when I've talked about, you know, five-plus, 10-plus years ago, when we actually made these types of decisions, they were technology-driven type decisions. We were looking at the device, can we support the device? What does the device look like? Can we repair this device quickly, which of course is important for students and teachers to get that device back quickly. But over the last five or so years, five-plus years, we've really taken a different approach to make sure we're focusing on having teachers and students involved so they can actually be part of that decision process because they're the ones who are going to be using the laptops, they're going to be using them day in, day out. It's going to be critical that it works for their needs. So we are very cognizant that it's all about the experience. It's not about the technology, it's about finding the right tool, the right technology for the teacher or the staff member or the student. So we definitely work hard to try to keep that in the forefront of our mind because it's not about the technology, it's about, you know, the experience, the customer experience.
Thank you, that was well said. Ms. Consella, did you have anything? The only thing I'd like to highlight is that somehow we, I don't know if it stays early August, that timeline where they're distributed to staff, I just, I hope that we really stick to that timeline and that whatever provider we choose sticks to that timeline so that our teachers and staff have time to acclimate to new devices before they're expected to perform and deliver content to our students on those devices. So thank you for all you do each and every day and to Ms. Atkins' comments, especially all you've done since our buildings closed on March 13th. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I definitely give all the credit to my staff who are the ones that were out working in the field, working in the schools, providing the devices, offering the support. But I will share, one thing that is of note is, we saw this when we ordered some additional devices last year, there was a lot of school divisions that were buying technology and devices and Chromebooks and laptops. So we're working very closely with our offers on those logistics and those delivery timelines to make sure we stay on top of that. So we make sure we do, so if we get them a little bit later, you know, in the months to come after we have a contract award, we're going to have to compress that schedule over the summer to make sure we have them ready for students in the fall. So we're willing to do whatever it takes with the offers to make sure whoever we award that offer to be, to make sure that does happen because we know the students and the staff have to have that device. I mean, they have to have it earlier too because it's going to be a totally new device and it's going to be a new experience for some students, kind of getting back in the swing of things of being, you know, back in the building after the summer and after, you know, they come back in school, you know, maybe in the months to come.
Thank you, that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maddox. I think we're
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions? Thank you. We'll look forward to hearing more about the outcomes of these efforts in March and again echo, the board has shared their thanks and I want to once again share mine on behalf of the entire HCPS team to you and your team for all that's been done related to both of these efforts and everything else, which is a whole lot
Right.
that your team's been up to. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, the next item is my recommendation that the school board award the annual contract, this is for environmental services, to Faulkner and Flynn Incorporated, DBA, MMA, environmental. And again, this is an annual contract for environmental services. Is there, excuse me, is there a motion to award the annual contract to Faulkner, Flynn, and everything else you said for the environmental services? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Consella. Is there a second?
Second.
Secondary of Reverend Cooper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the contract is approved.
Thank you. The next items are consent items and so therefore they can be taken in a block and so I am seeking your approval of the following. The acceptance of the monthly financial statement and budgetary status report for the month ending January 31, 2001, or 2021, rather, too many numbers in a row there. Acceptance of the monthly financial statement for school nutrition services for the month ending January 31, 2021. The approval of personnel items. And the adoption of the V SBA Business Honorable Resolutions. And I'll just note there are three of those resolutions which highlight businesses within our community who have a positive impact on Henrico County schools specifically. That's RICO USA, Henrico Credit Union, and E-Tech Mechanical Corporation. So those are the items I am seeking your consent for.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent items as listed? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Shea. Is there a second? Don't all jump at once. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, the consent items are approved.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, that concludes items that I have for the board today.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is the public forum. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the public forum. We did receive a couple of written comments that were submitted to the board and have been received by all, but this is the time where citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens may have signed up in advance. Madam Clerk, we don't have anyone, thank you. But speakers would be given two minutes to address the school board. We will allow, we will hear from those speakers who have not signed up in advance. Those who have signed up to speak may not relinquish their spot, again, that doesn't apply, because none have. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name or neighborhood or school affiliation to assist you in, and you're tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system on the platform of the stage. Speakers will have a two-minute time limit, the light will be green as you begin your remarks, the yellow light means you have one minute remaining, and we ask that speakers stop speaking when the light turns red. The school board is here to hear from you, our community, speakers should speak directly to the board. We will not respond to speakers, but we appreciate your attendance here this afternoon and providing any input. So, do we have anyone who would like to address the board? Again, everybody's happy, so that's great. But we do appreciate any written comments, and we do offer those at every meeting as well. All right, board members, our next item is the approval of the minutes. We've had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes that our clerk worked so hard on from January 14, 2021, at our work session and our January 28, 21, meeting. Is there a motion to approve our minutes? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, our minutes are approved. Are there any items of unfinished business? New business? Now, we do have several people with announcements today. I'll start with Ms. Shea, and then go to Ms. Atkins, and then to Ms. Cancela, okay? Ms. Shea, you want to go first? I think you have a quick item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This month is CTE, CTE month, and so I thought I would just give a brief update from the CTE Business Advisory Committee, on which I have the privilege of serving. The CTE Business Advisory Committee advises, supports, and promotes opportunities to contribute to the overall success of career and technical education programs. Our council is comprised of business and industry leaders, parents, and school counselors. It enables the committee to advise the CTE staff of the most current and upcoming needs and standards throughout the representative, represented industries and the needs of the students served. This committee provides direct support to the students through workplace readiness training initiatives to encourage and produce strong interviewing, resume writing, and basic workplace readiness skills. The work of our CTE department is truly fantastic. In the committee's efforts to promote CTE, the goal is to ensure that every parent and student in Henrico County Public Schools knows that we value the benefits of the CTE programs. The Business Advisory Committee believes in the mission, students and staff of Henrico CTE, and through our combined efforts, we are always working to promote and provide the best opportunities for our highly skilled students as they transition into post-secondary education and the workforce. I briefly will share with you the four subcommittees that we have, because I think it really communicates the work of the committee. One of our subcommittees is attracting students and parents, and to continue to change the narrative around CTE-based programs to help students and parents understand the value of the courses in CTE we offer. The second committee is serving current students, thinking about how do we provide our students in the programs we have with the support to be successful with both hard and soft skills. The third subcommittee is the Vision for Future Centers, which we are all very excited about here on the board, looking at how programs and CTE centers will change to meet the need of our students. And lastly, a subcommittee looking at membership, to continue to seek members that will serve in CTE and meet our missions. If you are interested, if you have a passion for CTE and you're interested in serving on this committee and any of these subcommittees, please reach out to me, and I will connect you with those who lead our council. It's a wonderful place, and it meets a critical need for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Ms. Atkins, you have some announcements to share, and I think we have a graphic, thank you very much. There we go.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to share a few committee updates, and we can go to our next slide. Throughout 2021, I do want to keep you abreast of my participation on several committees, and they are listed on the slide, and for those of you at home, it should be also available online in Board Docs, if you want to flow along with me. And so, the list is grouped by school board advisory, superintendent advisory, and external boards. The school board advisory committees are, provide insight to the school board, our superintendent advisory committees give guidance and share feedback to the superintendent. And on the external committees that I serve on, they also provide feedback along with services, whether it's for schools or families, et cetera. So we'll dive on in, I'm going to give highlights of just a few, and you can have the expectation that I'm going to share on the ones that I did not cover today at another time. Next slide, please. Actually, I was remiss in the last slide, we don't have to go back to it, but for those that were looking at that slide, those pictures are from our cornerstone farm, and I'm going to talk about that in a bit, that both Reverend Cooper and I are on the committee for. I'm going to start with the YMCA, specifically, the official name is the Chickahominy YMCA Strategic Alignment Committee. I'll say that only once, and reference it as YMCA, because that's what we know. And so, there are approximately somewhere around five members on this committee, and I like to use the term when I'm talking about our committee, that we're a small group doing the most work. We do a tremendous amount of work on this committee, and some of them include, which many are familiar with, the bigger YMCA's that provide childcare. This specific committee also, in working this year and thinking about the things that we want to do, we are looking at different ways that we can share information on COVID prevention. And some of the things include flyers, and potentially working with police officers in the community to deliver flyers, and just all sorts of ideas. And I'm very excited that the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity also wants to partner with our committee in looking at health and wellness, and how we can continue to increase information and empower communities around that topic. Other work on this committee includes trying to find ways to execute virtual learning with excellence, and those are just a few of the highlights from that particular committee, and I'll move forward with HPAL, the official name, Henrico Police Athletic League. This is a phenomenal group of people, there are somewhere around 24, 25 individuals on this board. Many are familiar with the wonderful partnership that HPAL has with Henrico County Public Schools, specifically around childcare, but they do so much more, and we do so much more on this committee, and apparently, one of the efforts is, of course, around trying to get staff and employees within HPAL vaccinated, and those efforts are going well. Something else that we are doing on the board is looking for a site, we're looking for a site somewhere within Fairfield and Brooklyn, to be able to continue to expand upon services. And so I will now move to CFC. Excitement, excitement, excitement here. The official name is the Community Food Collaborative Board, also known as the Fairfield Community Farm. I mentioned before, Reverend Cooper and I both serve on this board, I'm the lead on it, but Reverend Cooper is just as engaged as well in his desire and passion around this farm. And so, let me give you the mission very quickly here. The mission of the board is to use urban agriculture and education as tools to promote sustainable food access and conservation of natural resources. All that to say is, we want to teach children where food comes from. We also want to encourage healthy eating of naturally grown food, and, you know, when I say excitement, one of the things that the board is working on right now is a pilot called BUG, B U G. It stands for Backyard Urban Gardening. And when we think about food insecurities and things like that, there's just so much, so many wonderful ways that we can use the Fairfield Garden to talk about access to food, talk about farming, and so many other things, and we have these conversations in this board. Some of the more tangible work that's in process right now is around the journey. Let's memorialize how it started and where we are, and celebrate, and celebrate. Kids are very in tune to the farm over there, we want to figure out how we can expand it, potentially having gardens at other schools as well. On tomorrow, I'll be talking to several students, and one of the questions is around healthy eating, and maybe even the potential of using a farm that's on a school ground, and maybe eating some of the food from there. And so, I wanted to share some of the work on this board, because it has the potential to do so much. And so, that's what you hear in my excitement, and I'll move forward to the next one, which is HF PAC. And the official name is Henrico Federal Programs Advisory Committee. Actually, I prefer to say the longer names and the acronyms, but for this case, I'll say the acronym. The first meeting was actually a few weeks ago, and it really includes a number of people. You could have, you know, maybe 20 people one time, more the next time, or less, because the committee is made of and includes HCPS staff and the community. It is open to community members every single time. And in the last meeting, we talked about Title I, we talked about family engagement programs, particularly the Bridge Builders Academy as well, we talked about tutoring. It's an opportunity for families to receive information, it's an opportunity to ask questions, and it's an opportunity of empowerment. And that's the work that happens on HF PAC. So those are just a few highlights of my service on these different boards and committees. I know I didn't give highlights of all of them, so everyone watching and in the room set the expectation that I will. So more to come. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Atkins, and Ms. Cancela.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Atkins, for highlighting some of the other work that board members do outside of just Thursday meetings, and some of the other work that the pandemic has focused most of our attentions on. Should anybody like to see a summary list, in case they're wondering what other committees, other board members sit on, it's all out on the HCPS website, and it's a goal of the board this year to actually share updates, as Ms. Atkins has just done, as we try to return to more normal topics of discussion at our meetings. The announcement I had for today was, I just wanted to acknowledge and publicly thank special guests we had visit the Brooklyn District this week to help us celebrate our learners, our youngest learners that were returning to buildings. I just want to thank Virginia's First Lady, Ms. Northam, and Virginia Secretary of Education, Mr. Corny, and the Superintendent, Dr. Cashwell, for joining me Monday at Greenwood Elementary School, Monday morning. Mr. Stein and his teachers and staff just really rolled out the red carpet, as all of our other elementary schools did as well around the county, but they hosted special guests on what was an exciting return to buildings, but I'm sure folks may have been a little bit nervous about it, too. So I just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciated being involved with it, and how much I appreciated our guests taking time to come and share with us at Greenwood on Monday morning, and just how much work went into bringing our students back into the building on Monday. So, that's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Any further business? Okay, thank you. I will announce that our upcoming meeting is March 11th at 1:00. As always, we will adjust the time as needed, but hearing no further business, our meeting is adjourned.